Everything happening?
Yep.
Thank you for coming. It's 6:41. And we have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ann, it's your to- it's your deal.
Good evening.
And thank you for coming.
You are welcome. Ann Cotton-Ginn with TAF Law here to really assist you with your budget workshop tonight. I know that you've had various workshops. I haven't, I haven't been to them over the last four to six weeks on this proposed 2022 budget. Where we are this evening is really needing some direction and input from council. We're getting down to the wire to hit the schedule, to get data uploaded to Gateway in order to meet the advertising requirements and the days in between advertising before you can have your first hearing and your second hearing and adoption, which will occur through the month of October. I believe that your second meeting is your actual adoption meeting in October and your first one is just the introduction. But things need to happen before that with direction because all, all the information goes into Gateway and that's how the advertisement is generated. We no longer send it to the local newspaper and you see it in fine print. It's not online. It's a fabulous thing that the legislature has finally allowed us to do. Yeah, something like what you have here. So department heads, in a nutshell, department heads submitted their expenditures to Jenny's staff and to Jenny and to Mark. So we know what the expenditure requests are. We've calculated revenues. So our estimated revenues, not only for next year, but the next six months. Stop me ask questions. I'm just trying to give you a little recap. We're in essence doing an 18-month budget, right? We know where we were at the end of June. We're projecting the next six months, July through December of this year, and then all of 2022. And that's truly what gets submitted to the, to the DLGF for certification for you. A lot of numbers are coming from a lot of different places. We have numbers coming from the state on some estimates with formulas given to us to calculate it on its own. We have some numbers coming from the county, your assessed valuation, some of the county distributions, CAGIT numbers if you will, your income tax distribution. We have numbers that I've worked with so many department heads here on impact fees, on utility rates, and those numbers that really are generated from the town and looking at the past history, the last two or three years of history of the revenue for the various sources that come in, park, park funds. I know that, you know, last year with COVID, we had a big decline. So I've worked with Will on what, what is our best, best revenue estimates there. So we're combining our, our revenue, our tax levy, our maximum levy calculation that we prepared up against our expenditures with our current cash balances and what we're projecting forward. And this is where you get with that. You get all your tax funds, all your special revenue funds that need to go through council, and the utility funds, and the utilities are on a separate page. So there's two, there's two sheets that show this kind of, it's called the 16-line statement. It just shows the cash. Now, literally revenues, we expect the next six months, cash on hand at the end of the year, and then every, everything projected revenues and expenditures for next year. That gets you down to the bottom line of how much cash do you have on hand? Do you have sufficient reserves? And by the way, what kind of salary increases do we want to consider? Because what is currently in this budget is current year salaries. So we have that information to show you what that impact is of a one or two or three percent. Plus, there have been some staffing requests that need to be brought to your attention. I know they were in some of the expenditure discussions, but how did those really filter in and are they really feasible or not? With this, what can you see? Your maximum levy growth was literally only 4.3 percent. That gave you an estimate $156,000 of just new levy dollars coming in. Doesn't matter how much your assessed value grew because we have those maximum levy limitations in the growth quotient each year. That really limits your ability to have a lot of new revenue with regards to property taxes coming in. So you got to keep that in mind when, when we have all these requests for, for staffing that might exceed that maximum levy growth. So it might not be sustainable in future, future years. You got to look ahead as well. With that, is the place that you like to start is kind of the bottom line with projected salary increases? Or do you want to go through individual revenues and proposed expenses? What is your comfort level? Because I can also answer individual questions on revenue estimates and what's going into certain funds if you want. Counsel, what, what is your, with what you've been presented before tonight, I, I wasn't, I wasn't here. So what is your comfort level? We can do as much or as little as you want.
Personally, I'm, because we have had a lot of conversations. I'd like to see the bottom line on each of those levels of raises. Just to see if we're in a surplus or a deficit.
Find, where did that sheet? This sheet here.
Showing on the bottom of one, one dash, one of three. That's it.
Is that it? Thank you.
Do we, do we know what page that is, Will?
It, yeah, it, of the pages in line, it's page three, but on the bottom, it'll show one of three.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
I cannot stand still. We're proposing that you end the year of 2022 with $3,958,936.61. And you can see how we got to that, if you want to dig into that number, on the original, on the, on the first spreadsheet that also just talks general fund. It shows you how we get to that, to that final number and so forth and so on for all of the funds across the way. And then just below that $3,958, what we're projecting as your ending cash balance as the end of next year, it's just showing you really, what is your, just your true budget for this year? Do you have a funded budget or do you have a deficit budget? So it shows that with the revenues coming in for 2022 alone that we projected, expenditures going out, there's $358,000. That would be your net income. If you move over to motor vehicle highway, you can see that the proposed expenditures, which includes some, some capital purchases or increase in paving expenditures, that's leaving you with a deficit budget, if you will.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt. You said, so this, this one, you said those bottom line numbers correspond over here?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And I can show, I can show you how they do that. Like if you look, if you look under the general fund column on, on the, on the first spreadsheet you looked at, that showed the maximum levy, and you go down and it's purple and it says operating balance estimated December 31st, 2022. See that? $3,958,936.61. So above that shows you how we got there with 18 months of projections, if you will, for every, for every single fund. It's repeating. We're starting with June 30th cash balance. We're estimating revenues the rest of this year. We're estimating expenses the rest of this year. That gives us our December 2021 cash balance. Then we project a full year of revenues and a full of year expenses. And that's how we get to that December 31st, 2022 cash figure.
And what's the budget surplus of 358,734?
So that is literally taking 2022 estimated revenues for the general fund and then your estimated expenses right now without any salary increases or additional staffing positions.
That's what, okay.
That is that, those expenses.
That's what I was missing because-
So it's just showing you where you are as far as-
Without any adjustments.
Without any adjustments.
Because this page shows that we're in a deficit with those adjustments, correct?
Correct. Correct.
With the salary increases.
Correct.
Okay.
So Ann, you're pretty involved in this.
I am. I am. Please continue to ask questions as you have them. And I don't, I don't have all the answers because I'm not involved in any of the discussions really internally. I'm just taking information and putting it together the way I know how to present it for a budget.
Would it be safe to say that you, you did most of this?
It's safe to say that I put a lot of the spreadsheets together for this. Yes. Yes. You're welcome. So with that, that methodology applies to all of the funds that you have. And of course, you have payroll across a number of funds with park, park non-reverting, your utilities, your water, wastewater, sewer utility, so forth and so on. And so that's, these are the funds that you see here that will be impacted by any salary increases. Of course, there's other funds that we don't run salary through, such as local road and street or the rainy day fund or at a, or continuing education, CCICCD. Those are funds we can talk about with the expenditures that are proposed. But for, for balancing your maximum levy, your, your, your tax funds, the allocation of the levy dollars and the salary increases, these are the funds we want to hone in on first, I think, to give you a comfort level of the direction you may want to go. So with that, if we look at our, knowing that we have a general fund, net income of 358,000, if you will. So the next three sections give you the impact of one, two, or three percent salary increases. And that's really across the board. That's for all, for all employees across the board. For example, an additional cost for one percent is going to be 122,000 to the general fund. So then the next line shows you what that net income would be. So it would drop that 358 to 236 and then just upstates that cash balance as well. So that's kind of the flow that shows you the impact of the, of the south, proposed or projected salary increases that you may want to give.
Ann, I have a quick question on, on the calculation of the salary increases. A couple of weeks ago, there was, it was brought to my attention that there was a, a police officer that, or a, or a, a empty, or a empty spot to be filled as a police officer. And what we discovered is that that is a promotion position and not a fully paid calculated budget position. Do we know if that line item has been removed from the calculation for wages?
I'm going to tell you, Mr. Van Leer, though, I was given the, the salary workbook, if you will, that was created here. So I, I did not add or remove any positions that were given to me. And I'm not involved in any of those discussions at the town at that level. I can tell you the, that there is a position. I mean, Mark has let me know just of that. And that position is currently in the budget. It's currently there.
Is it, is it normal for a, as you put together many different spreadsheets, is it normal for a promoted position to be outlined in a, in a budget as fully funded?
It's, it's really your call as the town council. With, with the budget that I've done in the past, it's simply, it's, for the one I was responsible for in Richmond years ago, I simply had all current positions in, in the budget. And, and open positions, if you will.
Even, 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 even positions that, that you knew were not going to be filled in a given year?
It is, it's your call if you want to fund that position or not, or fill it or not. Because technically, if you fund it and you don't fill it, that money's going to the bottom line, right? It's going to turn out as net income instead of a loss. If, if it's truly not a position, why would, it, it's not my decision. If it's truly not a position, it's your call to completely remove it from the salary ordinance and to remove it from the worksheet that's calculating those salaries.
Thank you.
But yeah, that particular position is in the salary workbook, if you will, right now. So I'm, so page one of three of that spreadsheet literally gives, gives you the impact of that one, two, and three percent for current positions. And that means current positions that are, that are filled, right? It's bodies that are working right now. It isn't the open positions. Well, it is the open positions that, that they intend to fill, but maybe not necessarily the one that's-
Anything that's already been approved and part of the budget.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Correct. Then as we, as we go to the next page, we've summarized the proposed position increases or changes, new staffing, and the allocation across the various funds, who, who would pay for pieces or portions of that. And again, as, as we're considering new positions, you've got to consider the future and the, and the ability to fund that and, and where your money lies. Yes, you have the ARPA money, but you can't really fund a position with that ARPA money that you're going to be doing projects with. Yes, you have CCD and CCI funds that we need to funnel projects. So you can't really do salary, you know, payrolls and salary to that fund. So we want to, we want to be mindful of being able to sustain the salary level going forward with your expected income, revenue increases.
So if I'm doing my math correctly, pardon me. Hang on. One more. And we need to add it up again. That put, so the, the last page, three percent increase plus new positions puts it, puts us at a deficit for the year. Is that correct overall?
Yeah, it puts you at a, at a deficit budget position, right? So at this point in time, going into 2022 alone, not really considering the cash on hand, just looking at revenues coming in.
So it's unbalanced basically at this point.
And you're in a deficit position for the budget. Correct. So, but we wanted to show the impact of all, of all the requested positions. And I'm happy to run through those with you. Simply, obviously, there's an increase in a department head that MVH will support by 38,7275, or 3,500. But then when you add the FICA MICA impact and the N-PERS, the PERF impact, that's what it, it's elevated to.
And that's covered, I'm sorry, you said it's covered by what?
That one's covered by the motor vehicle highway. I don't necessarily have the department head position. I just have that, that's the fund that it was requested you go to. Mark can answer that. There's a position that they just wanted to shift, align locator position, and shifting costs to other funds just because of where this person is currently working. And that's taking everything out of the general fund and then allocating it to other funds. So you can see the 62,000 coming out of the general fund, allocating, allocating it to water, wastewater and stormwater, with the general fund still obtaining at like five percent of that. So. There has been a request to add a human resources director split across the funds with general fund. And then again, wastewater, water and stormwater. And I'm, the figures that were given to me, I'm assuming that those figures already include really total compensation. That's not just salary. That, that includes literally the, the salary, the health insurance and the benefits related to this, these positions. I saw in an email where council wanted to consider increases. And here's the impact of the increase from 9,000 to 12,000 for the president, from 8,000 to 11 for the vice president, and then the remaining council members from eight to $10,000. And you are paid out of the general fund and the three utility funds as well. That includes FICA and MICA. The water department has requested to add a new labor. Obviously, the utility would assume 100% of the costs of that. Park, park has requested a new laborer. Again, the general fund would assume 100% of that new labor position where most of their salaries come from. The community, the current community engagement coordinator is a part-time position. I believe that was put into the budget last year. Would like to increase that to a full-time position. So you can see where I've deleted that part-time position for you and added it as a full-time position and kind of reallocating that from general fund to park non-reverting and the utility. So the percentage allocation is, is a little different than what it was as a part-time position. Public Works has requested laborers, two new laborers. There's also was an overtime request from 28,000 to 55,000, an increase of 26,000. That's, that 26,000 I saw in the budget book and that is already a part of the expenditures in the public works department. So that, that is kind of looped in. So I wanted to make note of that here, that that's already a part of, a part of the budget. The fire department, they have a data entry clerk that is currently part-time that they've requested to go to full-time with, I believe, that being funded. Is that accurate? By center township. Correct. So that's a really neutral, not a fiscal impact to your budget. It will be funded. Other, other new positions firefighter, medics have been requested, two of those in the fire department. And that, that is not a current open position on, on the salary worksheet. These are new, new hires that aren't in there. You have a number of open positions as well. Police department has requested a new officer and then to increase the detective pay to equal a firefighter medic pay. So that, that's a minimal, minimal increase of 1,170. And there are two, two positions that have, that are considered detectives. It's been requested to increase the parking officer by $5,000. That's a part-time position. The impact of that is 5,385. And then truly, when I believe, explain this if I'm wrong, when there's a recruit, yeah.
The police chief's not here tonight, so I'll try and answer for him. On that increasing on the part-time for the parking officer, we actually don't have parking. And I probably typed that wrong in. I apologize. What they're wanting to do is increase their budget for, in their part-time budget because they're going to have an office administrator that is retiring. They want to keep her on part-time to train her replacement. That's what Chief Hilton had proposed in the budget. And I apologize, Ann. Again, I probably typed that wrong. Then do you want me to explain the FTO thing?
Sure, go ahead. Absolutely.
It was requested that while his field training officers have a recruit with them, that they're, they receive additional compensation during that period for the time that it's, it takes them to do paperwork and everything else that's required when they're training someone. He didn't estimate it to be a whole lot for the year, 1190, I think. So, sorry.
So those are the requested new positions or, or transfers. And obviously, you may see the need for some and not all of them as you move forward. And you know best where that, where those needs are. But it does then show you, it's like, okay, what's the, what's the highest cost? So I had to, let's look at if we did a three percent increase for everyone and you adopted all these new positions, where would you be? And Mr. Winters, that is, you're exactly right. It, it shows pretty, pretty upside down for your, your expenses exceeding your revenues coming in for the year. And that means you're going to be eating into those cash balances. And, and do you want to do that? And can you fund everything going forward? And, and that's what you've got to really consider as well. And look at kind of how many months of cash you have on hand as reserves anyway, if, if tax levies don't come in and if you, if you lose some revenues in the year. So that's, that's what, as the fiscal body, you get to, to think about and to decide and to, to muddle over a bit, if you will.
Hey, Mark, I have a question for you real quick. You and I had a conversation about public works. If we go back up to that page two of three for public works, did, did, do I remember that conversation correctly? That one of those positions may have already been able to be absorbed into the budget for public works as shift, as things have shifted around?
These line locate person has shifted. And you guys correct me if I'm wrong on this. Currently, it's assigned to public works. And as Andy has pointed out, he has nothing underground. So it doesn't make any sense for that position to be under his control. So the idea would be to move that line locate under if the position of the public, or the utility director is approved, that most likely that person would serve under that utility director because they, obviously, that, that would be all three of the utilities. And if that is the case, if that comes out of the general fund, it's my opinion that it would free up a position at public works. And because right now, he's getting absolutely no use out of this position. It's, it's considered a laborer, but we're so busy with locates with all the growth we have, Andy's not getting a, a single bit of labor truly out of him. So that, that was the objective. So it, and I'm not saying I can't speak for Superintendent Pitcher. He may still want two additional people on top of that. But, you know, and again, as we all know, the, these are, these, the department heads put these out there so that you all know what they're requesting and what they need. At the end of the day, it's your decision ultimately what you all decide to do. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And the, the other component I'd like to, to point out is your health insurance. Of course, that is a significant cost to the, to the town of Danville. You're in a fantastic program with the medical, medical trust. I can pull that plug since I started it myself years ago. But you had only a 3.3% increase in your rates this year. You currently have, you really only offer one plan, which is a high deductible health plan, you know, that offers a health savings account that you fund to $1,400 for all the plan participants. And then you also have the health clinic in your general fund that is truly even an additional savings to the employees. It seems like looking at some of the utilization reports that over half of the employees use that clinic, which is then clearly keeping money in their health savings accounts since they're not running those simple visits through the plan and they don't have the prescriptions because you get a number of free prescriptions also through the, through the clinic. But so one thing that it outlines, and it's called the Town of Danville Health Insurance, kind of net cost. What, what it does is I realized in the past, the town's been budgeting 100% of the liability. So say you only have 65 folks on your plan, you've really budgeted for all 81 or 80. And I thought, hmm, maybe we need to dial that back because we virtually know what enrollment has been and who is taking the town's coverage and who's declining because it's around their spouse's plan. And let's put in enough for some cushions. Truly, truly add the cost for the open positions, but really just have a little bit of a, of a cushion for if there's a qualifying event in the year and someone gets married and adds a wife or has a baby and goes to family. So we've, so that is what I've done. And I wanted to show you the detail on that. And Mr. Van Leer, this detail also includes every position that's on the salary worksheet as well that, that we'd be calculating increases on.
And what, and what page are we on on that?
I don't really know.
Very back of it, as near as I can tell. Yeah, yeah.
Of Danville Health Insurance dash net cost.
Yeah, it's, it's the last probably three or four pages.
Don't necessarily have to go through the detail of this. I just, I wanted to inform you of, of that. We are obviously funding the net cost, which is the total premium less the employee premium contribution becomes the town's net cost with current participation, the open positions, and then just some, some, some funds to take care of if, if there's a, if there's a qualifying event change. I think you needed to know that information.
So Ann, what's that total for, if we're budgeting for all positions, what's that total dollar amount that we're budgeting for?
Well, go to the very last page of that if you can, page three of three. But we're not, that's what I, that's what I'm kind of telling you, Mr. Van Leer, is we're not, in the past, you did budget for all of it. And I, I thought it was important to kind of maybe just dial that back because there's a few that we don't have. So it would have been 762,000 in health insurance and 113,000 in HSA. And now we're at 722,000. That, that is currently in the budget and 103,000 in the HSA contribution. That is not it. Go up.
And again, that's not, that's not individuals who are enrolled. That is all positions. Is that correct?
No, it's individuals who are enrolled and the open positions, the ones that will be filled that will, that we think will, that will have coverage.
Okay, so then I maybe I missed, I missed what you said, that we're budgeting for all employees.
You used to, the town used to budget for all employees. So I was just pointing out the change to show some savings to the budget process.
Okay, when, when did that change occur?
Just now, this year.
Okay.
That's, that, that's-
So, so what- So, so what was the budget for twenty twenty-one? Or twenty twenty? I mean, we can keep going back, I don't care, just to, what was it previously?
I, I can prepare that information. I do not have all of that in, in front of me at the moment. Um.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. We can, we, yeah.
You, well, we, actually you do have it in front of you, if you want to go for it. There's a, there's an entire other spreadsheet that has your enrollment. Um, it's called Town, Town of Danville Health Insurance Analysis and it has some color codes for each year and it goes back and shows your rates for twenty twenty, your rates for twenty twenty-one, that was quite the decrease. Um, and your twenty twenty-two as three point three percent increase. So it does show you uh the total annual premium, the total employee contribution and the net cost for the town for each tier. And then the second page just shows the total cost for, for enrollment, the, the sixty-five folks that are actually enrolled in it. So you can see what was, what was your actual.
Okay, so, so if I take, and I'm just picking on one, if we take uh, uh, you know, Plan Seven for twenty twenty, I take the, the uh dollar amount that, that is paid for by the town and, and in order to get a total, I'm not multiplying that by sixty-five, I'm multiplying that by total employees. And that's, and you're telling me that that's what was budgeted in the past?
I mean, it's, it's, it's your tiers, there's different tiers. You've got single, you have employee spouse, you have employee, children and family. So you have different tiers. So, so what, so.
And if I, and if I add up all of those, I, you know, those add up to sixty-five in that example, correct?
Correct. That was your actual participation.
Correct. And I, I just want to make clear that, but you're saying prior to this year, we were budgeting for total employees. If we had ninety employees, we were, we were including in our budget healthcare for all ninety employees. Is that correct?
Yes. From, from looking at the last couple of years, the answer is yes. So that gave you cushion. So clearly that unspent money went to your, to your bottom line, to your cash balance at the end of the year, unless you identified it and transferred it for another expense. But I don't believe that's probably what happened.
So if, so, okay, so if we, if we were accounting for um that in, in, in the budget and that's part of wages and then we were increasing wages by three percent, was that also increasing the, what we were paying for health insurance? Or not, not necessarily what we were paying for health insurance, but in the calculation of what we were paying for health insurance? Or is health insurance separate?
Health insurance is completely separate. Completely separate.
Okay. So if I go through each tier, okay, I, okay, well, let me go back to this because I still want to drill down on it. Is that those, those other uh twenty-five employees that we were accounting for, were we accounting for them at single, at family, at, at employee plus spouse?
Uh, it, it appears mostly at single.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, it appears mostly at single, just looking at the past data.
Okay. So as we plan for, forward, and I understand how people have life changes and stuff like that. So, and we have this new change and so we're at, you know, seven sixty-two and plus one thirty-three. Um, are we, are we, I guess what I'm asking is are we planning for uh three employees to have uh maybe a change in status or, or five or, or one? I mean, how many are we planning for?
Well, literally um, you, you can see what's in the budget again in front of you on this, current and budgeted participants on the far right-hand column of, of the health insurance net cost spreadsheet. And honestly, I did kind of uh, an approach to where some of the, I assumed some of the unfilled positions would be single and some would be family and some would be employee spouse. Um, kind of across, across the board. And so, for example, if, if truly an open position that's budgeted for family, which is obviously the highest cost, comes in at an employee only or an employee spouse, you're going to have that cushion for if someone in the mid-year comes and says, oops, I'm getting married and I'm not going to be in employee spouse coverage. So you're going to, I'm very confident your health insurance line is, is, is fully funded, but not with all eighty employees.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have one, one point of clarification? You, you, we were saying ninety employees and sixty-five employees. The ninety is what we've budgeted for and we only had sixty-five, correct?
Previously, previously.
Previously, previously. And it's not, it was like eighty, eighty-one, I believe, eighty-one from my calculations.
So our numbers here include eighty-one?
No, the current, the current budget, what's included in the expenditures is your current participation.
Okay.
The open positions, right, just positions that are open, and then just that cushion for if there's a few life changes in the funds. Made more sense to save seventy grain to the general fund that wasn't really needed, that you could just have to your cash balance or.
Sure.
Use for other expenditures. Clear as mud. Sorry if I was confusing on that, but I thought you wanted to know, would, would want to know what, where the health insurance fell into place there.
Are we, are we still on health insurance or are we going to be moving on? Because I've got a couple of things I'd like to bring up about health insurance.
Well, go ahead and bring them up.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, so Councilman, I, I had emailed the, I think you guys um some notes that I had had. Um, I was reviewing the different health plans that was uh presented to us at the previous meeting. Upon review, I honed in on Plan Seven, which is the one that we currently have, and also Plan Twelve. Uh, the coverage, the uh deductible, or not the deductibles, but the coverage of post-deductibles, um, plan, in-plan network, uh, stuff like that is all the same. The only difference is the um, the deductible associated with the plan. So this Plan Seven that we currently have is listed as a high deductible health insurance plan for the matter of being able to partner with a health savings account. So Plan Seven has a deductible of twenty-eight hundred dollars for a single, fifty-six hundred dollars for a family. So across those plans, we have um, you know, forty-five individuals on a single plan. We got three on a employee plus five on employee and children and I believe fourteen that are presently on um employee and family plan. Uh, I calculated uh a number for twenty twenty-one that are out uh cost on that, including health savings account, came out to about seven hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. One of the things that I was giving great weight on this morning on Plan Twelve and making a, a change to, um, one of the first things is, is that the um, the deductible uh increases to sixty-five hundred dollars for a single, thirteen thousand dollars for a family. However, the premium, anytime you raise a deductible in insurance, uh, but all things else being equal, the premium that uh the employee and the town pay uh goes down. So one of the things that I looked at is if you just calculated just the premium that the town would pay, we would go from seven hundred and twenty-six thousand to about uh four hundred thousand, um, which is a substantial savings. I had even calculated an increase in the health savings account. I mean, if we, you know, one of the reasons that we give fourteen hundred dollars for a health savings account is to help offset that cost associated with the um, uh, the deductible. I would expect that we would want to, you know, step up our, our game, you know, on that as well. Currently, we pay forty-seven percent of the deductible uh to a health savings account. Uh, and staying with about that same percentage, um, if an individual were to go or even if we just offered Plan Twelve instead of Plan Seven, which is still exactly the same as Plan Seven just with a higher deductible, that's it. Um, that even if we increased uh the health savings accounts to three thousand dollars, um, we'd still be looking at a uh, a substantial savings, um, assuming the same number of people are participating in, uh, in the plan itself. Um, probably, I, I don't have this number right here in front of me, but probably to the tune of somewhere around a hundred and, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in, in savings even after increasing um the health savings account uh contribution. Um, thoughts, feelings?
Greg, I have one question for you, I didn't catch this. Um, so you said a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in savings for the Town of Danville. Um, a decrease for the town and the employees, I suppose, on their share of the premium. And I didn't catch, how much of an increase to the HSA?
Um, again, I, I was looking at a number of three thousand dollars. So the HSA would go up from fourteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollars.
Twenty-six.
Per year.
Sixteen hundred dollars. Okay, the reason I ask, I, I, I think it's great to look into this. Um, I, I can, and I'm just one person, I can speak from experience. I, I had a massive increase in my deductible. Uh, I won't say when, but maybe around two thousand and ten when a certain law was passed. Um, and I, I, I can speak uh personally on the financial devastation that that created because unfortunately, when you have kids in sports, uh, they get hurt. Um, so I, I, as we make that move, obviously the three thousand dollar HSA is a good thing because it helps offset that. Uh, but you know, if you have, if we have any employees who are, you know, maybe they have a chronic issue or they're constantly going to the doctor or they have to go three or four times a year, you know, for, for folks who make forty, fifty thousand at a max a year, you know, a thirteen thousand dollar medical bill for a family is pretty, pretty steep. So what, um, and I'm sorry, I should know this and maybe it's in front of me, what's, what's the, how much do our employees now pay for their side of the premium?
Uh, right now, employees are paying seven hundred and some change per year.
The employer or the employee?
That's employee.
Employee.
Seven hundred and, I don't quote me on it, but I want to say it's like seven hundred and thirty-six or seven fifty-six per year.
So we could cut their premium down to, in half?
It'd go down to like four hundred and some change. Again, um, I don't have that note right here.
I think we need to.
In front of me.
Go ahead.
Mr. Winters, you have that information in front of you. Um, on the Health Insurance Analysis Workbook, if you look um to the, to the first page, there's a section titled Employee Premium Contributions and you can see, if you go to the far right for twenty twenty-two as we, as we look ahead on that, um, it shows the total annual premium of nine thousand and we're talking for, let's see, let's go to the, the high deductible plan, the pan, plan below, because that's where most everyone is. You have very few on the PPO. Uh, the annual premium is seven thousand five sixty-one ninety-three. With that, the employee is paying ten percent if you have single coverage only and for every other tier, the employee is paying twenty-five percent of the coverage. So you can see the amount coming out of the employee's pocket annually for each tier at the new proposed rate.
Okay.
And how much per pay over twenty-four.
And that's sticking with the plan we have now.
That is, that is correct. That's assuming you keep the same plan that you have right now.
Okay.
And, and I can easily update this spreadsheet and, and throw in the assumption that you would go to any other plan and let you see those numbers as well.
So it's obviously a tough balance. I mean, we're, we're, we're charged with uh being fiscally responsible for taxpayer dollars and so we do have to weigh, you know, if it's an, if it's a minimal increase on the, on the, on the employee, then to use the line.
It's a de, it's a, it's a decrease on premium, it's an increase on deductible.
Correct. But if it's a minimal net increase, especially for those who do have medical issues each year, um, then I could certainly just say, you know, to use a, a phrase that I don't like, uh, pay our fair share uh as an employee because we all have to, you know, we all have to do that. And paying ten percent or twenty-five percent is a pretty good deal because I'm in the private sector and it ain't like that, I can guarantee you. Um, and so I, I just think as we do that, we definitely have to weigh those ramifications of, hey, we saved you three hundred dollars a year on your premium, but don't get sick because you'll have to pay the first thirteen thousand dollars of it. Um.
Now, now wait a second, David, hold on. That, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just, that's, that's not, not a fair assumption because you just, you just measured a, a single premium with a family deductible.
Right.
So, so, I, I mean, you, those are, those are not, those are not the same.
Okay, so then I'll say sixty-five hundred or whatever that was for the uh.
Thank you, that, that's a, that's a more accurate statement.
My apologies. Um, now, if we're covering, you said families, three thousand on the HSA or is that single?
I, I, I don't see, I don't see a reason why not to do both.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I, but I have, I have another backup just in case, but please, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I'm just trying to understand it because I, I think as we're voting on that, we need to, we need to be ready to ex, you know, explain because, you know, it, most folks, and this is not meant to be a detrimental statement, you just don't know because you're not on this side of things, you don't see all the numbers. We're just telling you, hey, here's your new, so I just think we have to be ready to defend what we're doing and understand it.
Yeah, so, so I did some checking in on, on this uh health clinic, uh, because when we started this process, I was all for uh just getting rid of this health clinic altogether. Um, I've done a one eighty on that. I, I, if, if the clinic is being used the way that it should be, it's very, very likely that it, it can save clients, clients, employees thousands of dollars in deductibles. Um, by, by attending, you know, to one of those clinic days, there's clinic days in Danville, Avon, Plainfield and Brownsburg. Um, they're, they're available, you know, daily throughout the week. Um, you know, it's, it, you know, we are, we are spending a great deal of money to provide that service and uh even if there was something to, uh, you know, incentivize them to, to use that clinic, um, you know, maybe it's an extra, you know, five hundred dollars, you know, right now, we're giving them, if they meet certain checkboxes and everything, they can actually reduce their premium. It doesn't reduce our overall premium, it just shifts the premium from the employee to the employer, us or the town, you know. So, so if we're willing to spend that kind of money for somebody that does this, if we ask them, you know, hey, if you're going to go see a doctor, go, go to the clinic, you know, then maybe we, you know, en- enhance that HSA by another five hundred dollars because, you know, it's actually saving the employee and actually saving, you know, the town, you know, uh, some of those, some of those premiums and the deductible dollars as well.
Yeah. You, I, I, I think you make a really valid point on the options for the health insurance. I think maybe something you consider is, right now, you know, you're at that, at the high deductible health plan and what the rates are and any other plan that you would, that you would have, the rates, the rates would be lower. Uh, I know you have only like one week, you need to tell AIM by the end, I, I think I saw on a note, uh, by the end of next week, what plans you're going to offer, what you could do instead of just saying, gosh, employees, we're going to just change from the plan that you've been used to for years strictly to this other high deductible health plan with a higher deductible and a higher out-of-pocket max to offering both. I know you can offer two plans, you could offer.
That's correct.
Plans and you may not have as many people migrate over, but a few, you could offer a higher contribution to the HSA for that plan. Now, you're going to need to talk to a health insurance attorney because I can't remember quite, quite if you can actually do that. I know that some companies provide um a single amount to the HSA and then a much higher amount for the family. So I'm, if, if you can uh increase the HSA contribution for those who select that higher, even higher deductible health plan, that would be a way to start getting employees to make their own choice and to think about it. And some may say, gosh, look, I'm, I'm utilizing the clinic that offers all this free, free stuff and I'm just building my HSA for future costs. So I, I, you know, maybe not a, a migration of everyone, but to just go ahead and offer that plan and when open enrollment comes, it's a, it's an option and it's certainly going to be a lower cost.
And Anne, thank you for going there because that's actually where I was going to go next. Um, you know, we only have two people, one, one single, one family on PPO. You know, uh, Jenny did make a recommendation that we actually drop the PPO plan. Anne's correct. We do have two different plans that we can offer to employees. It's my understanding that right now, the Town of Danville is the only uh municipality that actually gives HSA money in the exact same dollar amount to a single and a family. So I do believe that if we do talk to our attorney, that we should be able to, um, you know, and I hate to use the word incentivize, but, you know, provide a benefit to, to those who are also paying a lower premium, uh, not only for, for their healthcare, but also the town's paying a smaller premium for their health as, plan as well.
We, we can get you that answer like probably tonight. Tomorrow for sure.
I just wanted to have a discussion about it. We, we, we were not in a position last year to be able to have that discussion. It's been, it's this thing that we have been discussing ongoing, uh, you know, amongst ourselves and it needs to be brought, brought up into, into the public forum.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, it's a great discussion to have and know that no, no matter what, what you have in the budget is current participation and even if you would offer this other plan, it's certainly not going to be an additional expense. I think it would probably offset even if you increase the HSA a little bit since we have that cushion already in there. So I, I think. So I think for what's proposed, you could still do the blend if you wanted to, and letting him know and let Jenny know by next week. Happy to run some numbers for you if you'd like to do that.
I like that option a lot better, is having both of them.
Yeah. Eliminate the PPO and have two different high deductible health plans. That's truly a good option. But I did, it is, employee benefits are one of your highest costs. So you needed to understand where the dollars are in the budget, kind of the assumptions that I made, kind of looking at the past and looking ahead. I wanted to be fully transparent in what you were seeing.
I appreciate that. Yeah, because we're at a competitive disadvantage, I think, in Danville, just because we're a smaller town, so.
David, and one of the things, even with a hybrid plan or offering both plans, if you did have some migration over between those two plans, I calculated that the town of Danville will probably still see about an $80,000 reduction in premiums. And that's just on the back of a napkin.
Can we submit that?
It's my napkin, it's not necessarily.
I don't know where you're headed next, but I wanted to maybe go back to the three-option spreadsheet there. If my math is correct, and someone can correct me or correct me later, if we gave no raises, and I'm not saying we won't, if we give no raises but add the new positions, if I calculated this right, we're still at a deficit of around $80,000. No raises, but adding the positions.
Well, sure, if you have the current income of 358, 734, and simply all the position changes, subtracting the 482, you're still in the deficit position, for sure.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
For sure, obviously. You look at your cash balance, and you say, gosh, we can dip into savings. But when you look at your cash balance, I think you also need to be mindful of kind of how much you truly have in operating expenses. How many months' worth of expenses can you cover if no income comes in? And that's not very many when you look at that.
Yeah, exactly.
I've included that also as a part of the total, in purple there. For example, without any salary increases, without any new positions, kind of your average monthly expenses are about 520,000. So you would have about seven months, seven and a half months' worth of cash on hand that you could cover expenses for.
Well, and I think.
That's the general fund.
And I'm a fiscal conservative, I don't like taxing people anymore than we have to. But one of the problems that the town has been put in by, fill in the blank, is that we've had not much growth over the years, and so our tax base has not grown. And I don't think it's keeping up, because all these costs, they're going to continue to go up. And if we want to have the things that we all, I'm talking about town folks and us, that want to have all those nice amenities and good employees, and you want that hole filled on your street, then we've got to pay for that. So hopefully, over the next few years, as we see some of these homes come in, we'll see that tax base increase. Another thought, another point is, I know it's not much, but I don't want to rely too much on funding that could either change or go away. And the one that I'm concerned about is, and I don't know if this is public information, so she can get mad at me, I guess, but I don't think Judy White's seeking reelection for center township trustee. And we have a pretty significant agreement with them. And I'm sure, maybe it'll continue the way it is, but I think that's something we ought to at least put in the back of our head. When that leadership changes, we might have to rethink some of the funding for the fire department. So I don't want to rely on, center township said they'd cover this. Well, that could change in a few years, in a couple of years. Just my opinion.
Significant revenue source for your fire services, for sure. With that, council, what is your comfort level? What would you like me to step you through? Do you want to go through some of the funds with their expenditures, some of the non-tax funds, so you're comfortable with what's in those funds, CCD, CCI? Do you want to have a discussion on your host fund? That needs to be really incorporated into this whole entire budget, that might be the next.
I'll say one more thing to answer your question, and then, I feel like Greg and I are tag teaming, taking the whole thing over here. But I guess my thought would be, I think, I'm not comfortable with passing an unbalanced budget. And yes, we have cash reserves, but to your point, we can't bank on that. And we've already shown with the host fund that we've gotten into some really bad habits of spending, taking annual expenditures out of that fund. And that's going away at some point, too. And that will probably outlive any one of us here on the council. But I'm of the mind of, okay, guys, department heads, go back, figure out how you can cut that down and get us more to a balanced budget. Because I think we really need to, I necessarily couldn't support an unbalanced budget at this point.
So we met with the department heads earlier this week, and we did have that discussion.
Okay.
Because we knew that hard decisions were going to have to be made. It's tough to get everyone to agree on everything, because everyone thinks their requests are obviously the most important. We looked at some of the low-hanging fruit, which obviously was the director of utilities, that's coming out of MVH, doesn't affect our general fund. We looked at the movement of the line-locate person. Because, again, by shifting that to the utilities, it frees up money in the general fund, it gives Public Works one of the laborers of the two that they're requesting. So you can call it a shell game, you can call it whatever you want, but what we're trying to do is work within our current budget. The human resources director, I think we all agreed, was a pretty important position. We felt like that should be funded somehow, some way. We talked about the water department's laborer, that's funded through the utility itself. So, again, doesn't really have an impact on the general fund. We felt like if Matt can afford it within his budget, we didn't have any grievance against it. So what that left us down to was Parks Department wanting one, Public Works, again, wanting two, but maybe already having one, then increasing their overtime budget. Fire department had a data entry clerk that's going to be paid through center township. So, again, doesn't affect our general fund. Obviously, two firefighter medics that are not being funded 50% by center township would affect our general fund. Police department wanting, go ahead.
No, we need to remove that police, that corporal position from the police department, because it's being fully funded at 80,000, 83,000, whatever it is. It needs to come out. I mean, there's savings there, too.
That's easy to remove, I can do that.
Token, the police department's requesting a police officer.
Well, but that's, yes, I mean, I understand that, but, well, you know what I'm saying.
I do. I'm just throwing these numbers out here so that you know that we've talked about these things. And really, again, I think we were all able to, and again, I really want you guys to step up if I'm not saying this correctly. We did believe the director utilities was an easy fix. Moving the line-locate officer made, a person made total sense, because we're actually going to get two-for-one out of it. The human resources director, we felt was a necessity. Matt's new laborer, we felt was, again, it's his call, he's got the money. He hasn't hired a new employee in 22 years. That tells you how they've done their.
What's one more?
Savage, he's a savage.
The only thing we didn't address was, obviously, and I put in here when I had sent this out, the council, I think you all had came to consensus that you were not in favor of your own pay raises. But, again, we had to put it out there. I mean, because, again, it was thrown out. So really, and I forgot about the community engagement person, I think we, it brings a unique perspective to our funding, because we've never done a five-way split that's been inclusive of park non-reverting. And so Will's throwing some money into that position, helps kind of fund that position. I think we've all seen what the current community engagement person's doing for the town, and so we do validate that it should be full-time. So really, what it comes down to, the hard decisions, I mean, if you take our, what we're recommending, what you've got to try and figure out is, if we can fund a new park employee, the additional labors and overtime for Public Works, and firefighter medics, police officer, increase in detective pay, FDO salary, and a part-time administrative assistant.
Can I ask one more question? And maybe I should know this, but, so you're talking about general fund, is kind of what you were just talking about right now. And then you mentioned that this position is a motor vehicle, the MVH, and so that doesn't affect, obviously, the general fund. But I see a deficit in that. So, and it looks like we have revenues coming in from that, and then expenditures going out. So help me understand why that deficit there is not anything for us to worry about.
Sure, I just saw the number tonight.
Because my negative numbers that I came up here with, I added all those categories together.
Right.
One of my questions on the expenses this evening, and I'm just, again, going by the budget book that I had.
Andy, do you remember why there was such a hit on motor vehicle for the coming year?
Andy, can you step up to the microphone, please? I can't hear you, buddy.
Portion was paving increase. We did break 10,000, so we're now at 50/50 on the community crossings. So that's a pretty significant increase that we're going to absorb. And then also, equipment was 360. What I was told when we had our initial budget meeting with Mark, Jenny, and I was with Greg, was that these funds have actually had a surplus, and I don't know where it's located, because I don't receive those numbers. So I was informed that we actually had a surplus going into this. So I don't know if these numbers are strictly based on what's going to project it from the state. Without having the clerk treasurer here, I can't answer exactly where that came from. But that was actually mentioned, that past councils have wanted to hold money back out of those accounts, not allow them to be spent every year. So there should be reserves somewhere. I could not tell you where those are at.
So he's correct. The proposed expenses that were given to me to insert into the spreadsheet were obviously higher than in previous years, with the explanation of the paving increasing to 225,000, the new increase to 360,000. And if you look, again, on that, the master spreadsheet that has all the activity for each fund, you can see how motor vehicle highway does have, we're projecting end-of-year this year cash balance of 1.1 million. And then, the projected budget, or projected revenues, and those strictly do come from the state and interest earned, you're right, the motor vehicle highway distribution, of 629, 183. And then the expenditures are the 1.48 million, which gives you that $419,000 deficit, if the council does want to dip into those savings that you've kind of built up over the years for next year. Knowing that in 2023, you're likely not going to have that $360,000 new equipment expense again. So that's completely, again, up to you in the MVH. I literally incorporated in what was in the budget books, the requests that were made to you at whatever meeting that was. So he's accurate, there's reserves on hand. The motor vehicle highway money does tend to decrease a little bit, you don't see a huge increase. You have the restricted and the non-restricted funds that are completely combined here, because it's really, the restrictor funds are for paving only, anyway, and you're meeting that requirement, so.
So I guess to answer your question, Mr. Winters, I do think there is some money in MVH already, based on what Anne is telling us. So we think we can cover it out of that.
So what you're saying is, we're going to have a loss this year there in that fund, but that's because of some special projects or special?
We will have a loss based on projected revenues as opposed to projected expenditures, but the account itself actually is sitting with, how much did you say you thought was in there right now? How much? 1.1 million?
Okay.
This year, that's your expected balance.
And those dollars are obviously there for things like this. So it's not, in one way, it's a loss for the year, but in another way, it's being used for its purpose. And we may have another year where we have an addition to that.
I guess it's next year, he's not going to propose $360,000 of new equipment, because you're not going to have the funding for it at that point. That's my assumption, maybe.
For $5 million last week.
Hey, one year a trend does not make.
And one of the things that Andy brought up, and the council needs to be sure to be aware of, because of the census of us going from 9,001 to almost 10,5, our contribution on grants, the matching contribution went up to 50%, I believe. So we were at 25, we're now at 50. So we have to budget more money, obviously, for paving costs.
Yeah, we may also want to look at how your levy is allocated. When you look at your actual, your park fund, and the levy dollars going to the park fund, you can see that the park is truly in a deficit budget position. We could take some of the general fund levy dollars and transfer that over to the park as well, because you really don't have a lot of miscellaneous revenue that goes into that, and it's your positions, kind of the salary and benefit positions and pool operations and so forth and so on. So we can also, as we're looking at some of these other changes, we can look at shifting some of those levy dollars over. Again, your maximum levy is your maximum levy, it's where you allocate those across your tax funds, since there's a little bit of a surplus. But again, we can go on your direction. Your debt service, that's first and foremost, out of the gate, has to be covered 100%, obviously, by those tax funds. So the dollars that are allocated there must be allocated there. We could truly only really pull from your general fund to move some money over to that park fund if you wanted to.
Anne, did I read somewhere that some of the arc money can be used to pay down debt? Is that correct or false?
Honestly, I'm not going to answer that right now, because I can't give you a final answer from that. I would need to get that from the attorneys, or I can look on AIM's website, and they have a lot of information out there. I don't have it all memorized.
All right, thank you.
Changing daily.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the other thing, it's important, I need to wrap my head around exactly where it all is as well, because you have significant dollars that's going to be great for the town to use, but you can't use it just to fund your general fund operations, you know, so you've got to be mindful of that. Just so you know, the law enforcement continuing ed, those revenues are declining, some rules have changed, and you can no longer charge gun fees. Let me show, let me pull up my revenues. Yeah, that was a new law, that gun permit fees went away as far as July 1. So that was $5,000 that went into your continuing ed, your local law enforcement continuing ed account, that's no longer there.
Superintendent Lofton, who's also our building director, has proposed, and again, obviously, this would need to be approved, but as we receive rental money for this building, it's going into CCI, or no, CCI, right. And he's proposing that, to help the police department out, that $6,000 be put back into their continuing education from CCI to make up for that money that they're losing. And, again, that'll be something you guys would have to decide if you're interested in doing or not.
Do you want to increase the budget to cover those services out of CCI? Because you can't just move funds, money from funds.
Answer that, I'm sure there's probably, you're probably correct. Yeah, so, I don't even know why I'm second-guessing it. Right. Because we are anticipating a possible new tenant coming in before the end of the year or something. Yeah.
So your revenue's going into CCI, your cigarette tax, that's the CCI fund, that's your cigarette taxes. You're going to receive $19,000 next year in cigarette taxes, all right? And then... And then, that's the revenue side. Let me go to the expenditure side. Right now, obviously, the in-the-line item is truly a proposed budget for CCI buildings, which is your repairs and maintenance for the 19079. I purposely don't see the purpose of putting something else in CCI that could be general fund if there's a different revenue source that was going into CCI. But we can, we can look through that. Or are you just meaning to appropriate, instead of having all of the revenue, the 19,000 that's coming in to repairs and maintenance, but reducing that and allocating it to a different expense?
That was one of the...
Okay. Your community capital development fund, you also do some paving and sidewalk there in CCI. You have some other, some of the workers' compensation comes from your CCD fund and insurance, most of your liability insurance. And also in edits, your economic development income tax fund, you used to fund, you funded one police officer into that fund for quite a while. Economic development income tax, you are allowed to use that for any governmental purpose. It used to have a lot of restrictions on it, and then the legislature kind of relieved some of those restrictions when they installed the property tax caps. As a fiscal officer, I wish they would have kept it the same as a former fiscal officer because I feel like folks use it just for things that should be general fund purposes. But in your budget now, that officer is back in the general fund, and you are funding a lot of your communication and transportations to about $15,000 in this fund. You have other professional services at $150,000. And then your insurance is at another 100, close to 150,000, 147,000. That's your general liability and auto insurance. It's your fire department A&amp;S policy, broker fees, bonds costs that are partially funded through this, through this fund as well. And that's been done for a number of years.
Another point on the professional services, that dollar amount, that's what's been assigned normally to the redevelopment commission.
Not a lot of, I would say, you know, material changes are requests. Certainly, the staffing levels are material changes, but, you know, other operations kind of just flowing and moving forward with the estimated, you know, increases in cost of that. It's really the direction and the feel that you're wanting to go in the time crunch that we're under. Now, we can certainly, you could certainly push off the adoption and have a special meeting that would give you another week or so to digest some of this and to have some conversations. And we can work with DLGS to kind of reset those dates if that's what you would want to do. Remember, you have to have this adopted by November 1, and we were going to have the October 6. Is that the date of the initial meeting? And then two weeks later, that final adoption. So if you wanted to, with that, we need to have everything in Gateway by next week. So that's why we're under the gun, and that's why I knew, I knew the clerk treasurer wasn't feeling well, and that's why I said I'd be happy to address you tonight. Other questions? Do you want to talk about the host fund or see the activity in the host fund? Do you want to tell me what you, that you don't like the spreadsheets that you're seeing, that you do, that something's not, not clear enough? How can I, how can I help you? What's the next step as council that you'd like to discuss or talk about? I mean, I could have stood up here and gone through every revenue account for every fund and every expenditure account for every fund, but I think you've heard bits and pieces of that. I thought it was important for you to see it all put together and what the bottom line was and what the, what the big decisions are, which is really staffing and salary increases and the few of these little things that have come up tonight, which is good.
I have a question for you. So last year, our budget process was forgettable, just with several delays and things like that. This year, it's better, but I still feel like we're behind the gun a little bit or behind the eight ball a little bit. Would you have any insight as to why? Because someone, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't seen, we haven't seen it laid out to us in this format yet where we can actually see, are we in deficit, are we in surplus, 1%, 2%, 3%? How can we get this information a month ago? Like next year, if we could?
Fees weren't available until Friday night, if I'm not mistaken.
It's not really impacting the detail. It's going to impact your tax rate allocation.
So we could have had revenue numbers prior to tonight?
You truly, I'm going to just give you kind of the process and the timeline of a budget. You really, you can start looking at your requested expenditures, right, at whenever you want, but you really can't start the budget until you have everything reconciled as of the end of June, right? Because we're starting with June reconciled cash balances and then projecting forward from there. So truly, the earliest you're going to start any of this is mid-July. Sometimes you don't have some of the state revenue calculations, the allocations for motor MVH, local road and street, some of the C-Vet cigarette tax, those kind of come into place sometimes late July. The levy growth comes in July, July. It's timing, it's digging in and timing, and it does take a lot of time to go through this and to do it right and to not just apply any number to fund a budget. I strongly believe that revenues are very important. You cannot overstate them with your expenditures. So it just takes time. So could the process have been started earlier? It certainly could have been started earlier, but we're where we are, and I think you have a lot of information.
Yeah, I'm more concerned, you know, just trying to prepare for next year.
Yeah.
We bumped it up even two or three weeks, I think that would be helpful. I know that's not your, that's not your problem.
I could not agree with you more on it. I couldn't agree with you more on it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's go ahead and move into host because, I mean, there's, you know, there's some things in there that we need to, we need to discuss unless you guys wanted to do, talk about something else.
So where do we start? Let's, let's just pull up, I'll walk you through host, but let's pull up the expenditure, your big expenditure work book. And the host is towards the back. It's page 19 of 21 on the expenditure reports. Okay? And, well, you can throw that up. There's a lot of information on this page, you guys. I have, a few years ago, I actually started this when I first started, started with TAF when you were just looking at the host fund and looking at the investments and the timing of your investments, just to give you a picture. And today, I decided to update that because I thought this document would be helpful for you to see just how you've dipped into your host fund balance over the last few years where you've spent more than you've taken in consistently. So you can see all of that kind of history for the host community agreement fund and then your investment fund. And literally, those numbers, I don't have access to your accounting system, I just pulled them off of Gateway and then knowing what we were projecting for the rest of this year and next year. So this will give you a really good idea of how the host fund activity has, has been.
What page is that?
For the expenditures, 19 of 21.
Large stapled.
So for example, for 2022, in your host fund, and I've hit the time of night where I can't, we're kind of estimating that you would receive $720,000 next year, and the proposed expenses are 848,478. So out of the gate, expenses are about $130,000 over what we think we're going to get in the fund. And clearly, that's going to use, use up any of the reserves and everything that you have in the host fund. Make sure that figure is right for current cash. I'm not sure if it is. I literally just added the host.
Looks like we need to cut those attorney fees down.
I'm not an attorney.
Good answer, good answer.
I'm sorry.
So David, actually, I mean, you made a comment, and I wanted to kind of come back around to that because I think, well, when you and I had discussed the host fund, I kind of wanted to get your feeling on this, is that I completely understand what you're saying about not wanting to pass a unbalanced budget. You know, I think that there's some things that we can do that would help bring the, I'll say, our general fund and those accounts, you know, very, very close to being in balance. You know, I have, you know, looked at removing the technology fund from the host. I think, David, you even mentioned about attorney's fees. Ann, can you, can you tell us how much we have in rainy day right now?
Yes, I can. Give me one second, I'm looking for the cash. Actually, I have it here, it's also on the fund. As of June 30, you had $783,145. I do know that there is a proposed additional appropriation for $325,000 that would leave you with about $458,000 at the end of this year as a balance.
Correct. Okay. So, you know, David, I mean, one of the things, you know, because we talked about possibly removing some of those items from the host to use from surpluses that we have, you know, I understand we have seven and a half months or so of operating, you know, capital in there. You know, if we were to, you know, reduce our $3.6 million surplus, you know, by $100,000 a year for four years, you know, by removing that technology, you know, component out of the host, would allow for a couple of things to happen. Number one, for some of the growth to occur and for the, you know, arrears tax to catch up. You know, it would also, would it, would it reduce, you know, our amount of reserves? Yes, it would. Would we operate in a deficit? Possibly, you know, a little bit. And then it would probably also be at the tune of another council at some point in the future to determine whether or not to bring technology back into the host fund or to preserve the host fund for its, I'll say, original intent. So I guess, David, I'll ask you the question is, I mean, how would you feel about running that type of deficit?
Can I sleep on that?
You can, absolutely, absolutely. I think we should take Ann's advice, too. I think if we need to do whatever we need to do that would buy us another week or so that, you know, we can, we can, you know, hash through some of these things that have come up. I think it would be in our best interest.
Yeah, I think not only is it the right thing, because I would say this in any other circumstance, I just think with, and I definitely think we need to cut out the council salary increase. We don't, like, we can't, I can't with a straight face have this conversation and say, yeah, give me a raise. So we definitely need to cut that out. But, you know, we're, we've been under a little more scrutiny this year for some of our decisions, and most people aren't going to pay attention to this, but, you know, those who do, as they should, you know, I just want to make sure we're spending the money the right way. And, you know, the one thing that makes me feel a little better about the overall deficit is if we kind of remove that MVH deficit from the calculation. Because if that's, if that turns around in the future as early as next year, then, you know, it's a little easier to justify. I still think, though, because of what Ann said, that we have seven and a half months or whatever of cash in there, that we should still go through that exercise of making sure we're only doing what we absolutely have to do this year because we can always revisit it next year for some of those things.
You know, and, I mean, they put that in a number of months, you know, how much, how long can we operate, you know, without revenue coming in? I mean, even during a pandemic, I mean, we did have some things that were delayed, but, you know, my understanding is we're in a pretty good position, you know, even post-pandemic, or, I mean, through the rough part of it, that, you know, we're still okay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing some of those reserves come down slightly, not greatly, just slightly. And if, and if in the meantime, I'm going to get up on my soapbox for a second, and in the meantime, if we can, if we can reduce the amount of lazy cash that cannot be invested in anything other than short-term CDs and stop spending out of the host that where we can invest money, you know, at fair market rate as it deserves to be for the benefit of the future Danville, I think then I have no problem spending that, spending some of that cash down. And while we're at it, we can move, move an officer from the edit if you really want to get froggy with it. We can move him out of that, too.
He's currently in general fund. He's out of edit right now. The proposed edit budget does not include the salary and benefits of the officer. It's, he's back among the general fund with the rest of the police department.
I did not know that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, the other thing with the host fund, you're funding some of your priority projects, but you do have, you know, $202,000 that are covering your bonds, your bond payments. It's going to feed the debt service funds as well. So that's a commitment for a few more years, guys.
And Ann, that's actually why I had asked that question about art money, you know, because David and I had a, had a conversation about trying to maybe find a way to, you know, pay off some, pay off some debt to alleviate that. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the first tranche of bonds comes due in 2024, maybe 2023. So we got another two years.
Yeah, you have a few years. I have, I have it all on here. I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized. I made notes of it. On the debt service funds, I just, yeah, you have a few more years on those. I knew your new, your new general obligation bond was only three years, but the others, It's also, all the bond schedules are in your, are in your budget book, every schedule is with all the dates.
I asked the question only because I don't have my binder in front of me. I'm sorry.
The park bond fund, I think, goes through 2024, because I've just had some notes here. I just need to, let me just look. Does someone have their, yeah, does someone have their book? I just added a few years of stuff. Yeah. It's a, it is a few more years on all of them, but not truly extended out. And then obviously, utilities have the debt as well, and we have a full schedule under, I think it's tab three, all of them. Chris, do you have your book?
It's all right here in tab.
Yeah, I thought it's all under tab three. The public works bonds certainly go through 2024. You're right, I have that here. The new geo bonds go through about the same. Thank you. Here we go. Your geo bond, your new one terms, 2024, I knew that was in there, thank you. Park bond, 2029. The public works communications, 2024. Your water utility is 2022 and 2024. Your wastewater is 2025 and 2026. The geo bond, I just talked to you about, the new one, 2024. Oh, excuse me, I was, I was looking at her payment schedule. I've already, I've already set all of them because we've got some in January and some in July and some in May and some in November, so. The schedule is all there.
Thank you.
Good schedule.
Ann, I guess one last question for me is, I mean, as you've been going through all of these spreadsheets and things like that, is there anything else jumping out at you that you feel that we should know that we haven't already discovered? that you feel that we should know that we haven't already discussed?
You know, I, I, I feel like the department heads have been very open, and there are requested expenditures with you in previous meetings, so I, I don't feel the need to kind of hash that out. We've touched base on the capital purchases that were requested mostly. Obviously, the MVH was the largest one. I think really the biggest thing is the, is your decision on staffing and, and again, on, on salary increases and where, as the fiscal body, you want to be with your cash balances, if you want to have truly a balanced budget in each fund or if you want to dip into reserves on some of the funds to float through. And that, that is truly the, the balancing act that, that you're, you're going to want to make here. Obviously, I thought it was important that you saw the detail in the host fund and kind of your reliance on it. There aren't any other communities that have that type of lucrative fund that you can fund so many general fund operations and projects from, so it's, it's really a blessing to the community that, that you have that, that down the road will obviously go away. And then the one thing we haven't really discussed a whole lot tonight is your food and beverage fund. You have about $200,000 coming into it and proposed expenses of, of the same going out. And I know that those are obviously restricted to pretty much, I mean, economic development projects, but a lot of the park trails is what you're, I believe you're using that for with Will once we got that passed. We did a full reconciliation of that last year, and you need to be comfortable knowing that all of the, all the required entities are participating and now collecting that tax, additional tax, and submitting it to the Department of Revenue. So you're really realizing full dollars now. I did do a thorough look and review of that during COVID. You know, it's really, the budgeting process is always interesting. You know, you, you look at these individual funds, but they, they all work together, right? You're, you're running all of the town's operations through all of them, so you're trying to balance them individually and then also collectively as you're looking at one year and then looking forward two or three years or even five years out, what you want to do, understanding that you have annexations, you have new developments going in, and hopefully that assessed value increases and gives you some additional, additional monies as well. So it's really kind of an exciting time for Danville.
It's always exciting here.
I, I hope, I know it's a lot of detail, but I felt like it was important if you hadn't seen some of the history and revenues or the history and expenditures by fine line item, that you've got it right in front of you now for a few years, to explain why some of the, the requests are what they are. Maybe, maybe you saw $45,000 in a new vehicle last and you see nothing this year, so you can actually say, oh, yeah, well, we don't, we don't need a new one this year. So I was trying to give you information to help facilitate discussion and facilitate questions. I'm not here every day, trying to certainly, certainly help with the process, and I've enjoyed my time working with the department heads on this as well here in the last, last week and a half or so, as I've been like, okay, guys, let's, let's try to figure out this together, and they've been great to work with.
All right.
Well, thank you for your help, Ann. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Very professional, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any more questions, anybody?
I want to make sure that I understand direction. Are you wanting Ann to prepare or someone to prepare a comparison to Plan 12 and Plan 7?
Yes.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
I know what you need on that. I can do that. I think, I think the direction for us going forward to communicate back to the Clerk Treasurer is really, if, if you want to move forward with changing the dates, we need to, we need to kind of get that timeline in place right away, if that's what you're going to do, and set the, set the special meeting, or if you want to stay on track, I've got to have some real direction, because I'll have to have, or someone will have to have everything entered into Gateway by, by the end of Monday, which is really quick.
What are we, what are we entering into Gateway at the end of Monday?
You're entering, you're entering into Gateway exactly what you're going to be advertising as the budget. So you're going to be entering, entering, obviously, all the information we've gone through tonight. So literally, all these forms are a component of Gateway. You know, you have what's called your current year fiscal workbook that gives you current year data, current year revenues and expenses and cash balances at the end of the year, the additional appropriations that you're going to need to do. You'll have to do two, the one for the rainy day fund, the one for your debt service increase, where we didn't have your geo bond exact final numbers when you adopted the budget last year, so you have to do an additional appropriation there. Then you have your revenues and your expenses, and literally, what we're inserting is exactly really what you're seeing on these spreadsheets. You're inserting your estimated revenues for the next six months of this year and your fully proposed revenues for next year, the same on the expenditure side as well. And then those forms kind of do the calculations that I've put forth for you in that kind of sixteen-line statement, and it calculates your estimated ending balance, and then you're also inserting your property tax allocation across the tax funds, and then it obviously calculates the, the tax rate by each fund based upon the assessed valuation that you're using. I have inserted the assessed valuation that we received, again, just this week. We will back that down for advertising purposes in order to make sure there's no changes and that we can capture every dollar that is due to you for CCD and obviously for your maximum levitation. You don't want to lose out on any money because we estimated the assessed value too high, when we'd be able to capture those, those full rates. I call it the budget game, but, so that's what you'll see. So that's what we enter into Gateway. It's kind of the same information you used to manually have to, to publish, but Gateway's a, is really a fantastic tool the state finally came up with, so. That's what has to be entered, because that's what is technically your advertisement. And if you don't advertise correctly and you miss it by a day, your budget's going to get denied, and you'll have to do an additional appropriation for your entire budget in January, and that's not fun to do.
So, Ann, if we, if we, if we have these expenditures, and I'm going to use this as an example, since we're talking about healthcare, is that if, if we're putting in a, a dollar amount, and then we opt between now and the time, you know, September seventeenth rolls around, that we have to have AIM notified, since this information has to be in Gateway by Monday night, that we make a change to healthcare costs, which ultimately lowers the cost of that. I mean, essentially, we'd still be in compliance with, with the budget because we're not spending more. Am I saying that correctly?
You are saying that correctly, and that's why I kind of halted the conversation a little bit, because no matter what, you're really, you're really funding the budget that is including kind of your maximum healthcare costs, if you will, because you know you're going to add a plan that would be a lower premium rate out of the gate, even though you still might be increasing an HSA contribution for those who transfer and migrate over. So, so you are correct. This budget is a tool, right? There's always mechanisms, if you have the cash on hand, to do an additional appropriation or to do a budget reduction, like we did last year, to be able to kind of show money and show additional funds. So you, you want to, you want to be mindful of adopting a budget that is as, as close to what you want regarding cash balances or whether it's a, a deficit budget or a surplus budget, but you always have the tools in place to do a budget reduction or an additional appropriation if needed, and that's why those steps are there, for you to be able to manage this going forward.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, this is where councils, our council and past councils have, have put, you know, and I'm just using this as an example, three percent wage, wage increase in there as the maximum, only to be determined at a later date. Now, I believe what we've done is we've moved that date up to the adoption of the budget, which would be in October or by November one or whatever. But again, just using that as a placeholder.
Yeah, you could. I, as a fiscal officer, and, and it doesn't have to be done this way, when I was in the city of Richmond, I always had my salary ordinance go right alongside the budget, because I felt they were hand in hand, and that sometimes can get a little political from the time you adopt a budget to the time you are required to adopt the salary ordinance, and sometimes that could get a little muddy in certain places. I, I think the two go hand in hand. That's just my personal opinion, not a recommendation.
Anybody else?
I don't believe I have anything else, Mr. President.
I need to know what your, your intent is for the work study for the seventeenth. The joint board is scheduled to be in this room at 5:30. Their meetings usually are extremely quick. We can meet at six, or I can ask the joint board to vacate their meeting and we can come in earlier. We're scheduled for 6:30. That's what we advertise for the rest of the year for work studies. So I just need to know what, what it is, what time you guys want to meet next Wednesday and what you are proposing your topic to be.
I'd say at least six o'clock.
Yes, sir.
But I, at least six o'clock. You have no say then.
I can be here.
Six, six next Wednesday.
Great.
Is that okay, Greg?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm good at six. That's fine.
Okay, let's call it for six.
And then, is there, are we going to continue on the budget process, I assume, or?
Well, is, so going back to what you said earlier, Mark, you've talked to the department heads. Are you guys still working on maybe seeing what you can cut out, or is that discussion over with?
We can go back and see again.
Okay. Well, I, I didn't know if, if.
Yeah. I think, I think at the time we met, we all had a consensus of where we were sitting and.
So you're good with what you've got at this point?
We felt.
And are, and I apologize, are, is the result of that discussion, is that, is that reflected in any of these numbers?
It is not.
So for any changes, is it possible to get those numbers sent back out to us?
What you're asking is, I mean.
Like the count, I mean, if everyone agrees on the council pay, I don't know.
Shows what they're all asking. Not really necessarily prioritized, but it is.
Yeah, you can, that's fine. No, that works, works for me.
Is that it, Mark?
Yeah, I just, like I said, I assume budget workshop would be the general topic for our work.
Well, sometime soon, we have to schedule an earlier work study so that you can bring food in.
If that's the, the direction of the council, I'm happy to do that.
Can we have, can we have a, a food work study and?
Yes, absolutely.
Or just discuss food? We can do that.
I, I have no issue either way.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion to the second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's closed. Thank you, Ann, for coming. It's very professional.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.